Okay, we will reconvene our meeting. We spent the last two hours between a goals workshop session, which we got halfway through.
Mm-hmm.
So it's good we have another one scheduled in August to complete. And then we had a half hour executive session to discuss personnel and potential legal matters. So, getting to our agenda. And John, I'm assuming we should switch the agenda around?
You want to take, um, with Leah?
We'll take the survey.
That's, that's, we'll skip the SSBC update.
Right.
Sure.
Okay, so first we'll do the, we don't, any public input?
Oh, please Rita, I'm begging you. Please.
Student report, we don't have in the summer. And then let's hit an update on the secondary school building project, which I know everybody thinks is complete, but it's still not complete. Ms. Bernard?
I've got now?
Yep.
So in your report, I've identified a few things that I think are noteworthy. The first is the drainage repairs for the main access road were deemed to be successful, and notification of that was provided to us on June 27th. Again, we haven't met for, or you haven't met since June 19th, so there's been a lot in between. That subsequently led to the paving of the access road last Thursday and Friday, the 20th and 21st of July. The striping of the road is to, is scheduled to take place on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, July 26th and 27th, obviously weather permitting. There have been a number of trees replaced around the campus. There are still some shrub replacements to be addressed. I did identify at the last Secondary School Building Committee where I thought those needed to be, needed to take place. And Chip Highcamp from Doran Whittier, I think, took note of the, particularly the two mound areas on the front in rear plazas. And we also were able to, and I appreciate Gilbane's cooperation in agreeing to some more hydro seeding, particularly in the area of the connecting bridge that comes from Main Street over to this portion of the campus on the sloped area. A pretty significant area where the grass actually has taken more than I might have thought it would in kind of the heat of the summer, but be that as it may, there are still a number of bare spots that will be hydro seeded. Right now, the target date for that is August 11th. I have asked for, and unfortunately have not received for tonight, a report from Gilbane on the outstanding items to be addressed in the punch list, but according to the report from PMA at the last Secondary School Building Committee, that, that list continues to be whittled down, but I was hoping to be able to provide you with a more specific list of what is still remaining, but I do not have that. I did have a meeting with AKERS. I wasn't able to give you any specific information about the audiovisual upgrades because they were scheduled to take place last week, and I needed to prepare the report for you, but I can tell you that AKERS continues to be extremely cooperative in addressing our concerns. We had a pretty significant upgrade to the projector unit in the Performing Arts Center that went very well. We have a test, we had a test of a new projector for this room. You might recall that we had, this is a replacement of the same style of projector, which was a significant upgrade, but they brought in a laser projector for us to, to test, and I can tell you the improvement, it's, it's 10 times as good as what's on the screen right now. It was, it was amazing how much clearer and brighter and sharper it was, even with the shades of the windows open. So that's something that we're considering as an upgrade. They have done a substantial amount of work, troubleshooting some issues that we had with the operations of the system. Again, I can't say enough that I'm very pleased with their, their response to our, to our concerns. We've also processed the purchase of the microphones that we had committed through the Walter Flint Memorial Fund, as well as the Facility Use Funds. That, that order was placed, would you say, probably the end of June?
Yeah, end of the school year.
Just a month ago. So we think among the upgrades there are microphones that don't, you don't need to be speaking right on them or into them, much like we see in the Performing Arts Center, that they have a little bit more of a broader range, so if you turn your head, the idea is you wouldn't lose volume, you don't need to be standing right over the microphone, as well as a system that will allow us to eliminate one of the microphones for town meeting, and therefore we can be using one, one microphone that will be both for the internal audio, that is, for people in the audience at town meeting, as well as for NORCAN. So we think that that's a good upgrade. We're not going to be running around with the two microphones, much like we have been doing. So that should be in place for October town meeting, as well as just overall upgrades for any other uses of the Performing Arts Center outside of town meeting. And I believe that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman. Not, not related to the building project, but I just, something that came up, I think in tandem to a report on the building project, was about the striping of the parking lots and other, you know, kind of the crosswalks and other zones of this campus. We also extended that. We are going to be doing some work this summer at all of our schools to identify kind of the caution zones, the yellow curvings and such, as well as, I think, Mr. Webster, you brought up about the striping of this campus, and that will be taking place before school starts in September.
Are we, are we 100% responsible for the cost on that?
Yes.
As a shared, not a shared cost, or?
With the building project?
No, with any, any of the schools?
No, we're, we're doing it as a district, a district cost.
Okay. Any questions on the, Julie?
As far as the upgrades specifically for the Performing Arts Center?
AV, yep.
What are we responsible for financially for those upgrades?
That's a very good question. I have to tell you, right now, right now, very little. AKERS, the original meeting that they requested back, hmm, boy, I don't know, it's quite a while ago, six or so months ago, was about them, I'll, I'll use the phrase restoring their reputation. The way they tell it, they, they felt like they wanted to address issues that they knew were in existence back when Austro was on, the electrical contract was on the job, but felt that they were prohibited from doing so. And once Austro was gone from the job, reached out to Patrick Daly and to me, and asked for a meeting to discuss what they thought needed to be done, and to also entertain any other concerns that we had. So consequently, they're, they're, right now, I would say they're in the, they're in the kind of the customer service, customer satisfaction phase. They are making some recommendations to us on things that they think would be, you know, more useful. For example, if we decided to go with a laser projector in this room, that would be a cost we would incur. It was, you know, this is specified as part of the job. But they, they have been pretty good about, they replaced a DVD player in the Performing Arts Center, they upgraded. They think, they thought that that should have been, you know, a better, better quality DVD player for that, for that space. As well as, they've done a lot of just like, I'll say, little minor things, adjustments that eliminated crackling in the sound system, things that they saw that they thought were, you know, connections that they didn't think were as, as strong or as sturdy as they thought. There's kind of a whole control unit up in the, in the control booth of the Performing Arts Center up top, that they, you know, a very simple fix, they, they're mounting that as opposed to it being a free-moving rack, and because of that, if it gets moved, cables in the back, you know, either come out or come out partially, and therefore compromise the quality. So there's a lot of little things like that. Pretty expensive projector in the Performing Arts Center control booth that they've encased with a ventilated box to protect it, because when people are up there walking by, it's, it's so huge, it's a big projector, as you might imagine, but they felt like that that was something that would protect and therefore preserve the projector. Things like that have been no cost to us right now.
This is highly unusual. This is subcontractor that did this on their own initiative. I mean, I don't think-
That's right.
-that kind of cooperation from any of the subcontractors certainly-
I, I think you could say that.
Are, are the general contractors.
They've been out here, I would say, no fewer than eight times.
They put in some time.
Yeah. They've been very, very good.
And it, these were the tweaks that needed to be done, too. I mean, they were necessary and probably beyond the warranty period, too, as far as getting these things done.
I think so. No, as you say, they're probably one of the, if not the subcontractor that we've gotten the most, I'd say, customer satisfaction from.
Okay, any questions or comments on the school building project?
Well, John, the only thing I want to suggest is, again, if you're talking to Joanna, to try to keep, uh, keep on them about the parking lot situation.
Yes, I will. Yep, I will.
Okay. Okay, next we have a presentation. We have Amy Luckowitz and Leah Mayo's here, and they're going to give us the results of the pride survey.
Really, Leah show?
Leah. Mike, you want to put microphone up there, so?
Yes.
Yeah.
So maybe, Mr. Chairman, as you all get into your spots to view the presentation, just by way of an introduction, I just recall that back in the late winter, we had come to you, Leah had come to you, I think it was a meeting at the Batch Elder School, seeking the blessing of the committee to administer the pride survey to students in grade six through 12. That was done early spring, and so what Leah is here tonight to do is to provide you with kind of a general overview of the salient points of, of the data.
Pretty much.
And talk a little bit about what plans she has and what work the CIT, Community Impact Team, may be doing in the next year plus, to try and reduce some of the numbers that you're going to see tonight.
And actually, before she gets started, I should note that we have Chief Murphy here from the Police Department, and Rita Mullin from the Community Impact Team are also here tonight.
Rita, you're not going to speak, are you?
Thank you very much, Mr. Webster. I appreciate all you've done for us.
Mr. Benetts would like to make a quick announcement after. Leah?
All right. Hi again, I'm Leah, from the Community Impact Team, and I'm the project coordinator for the Drug Free Communities Federal Grant. So again, like John had mentioned, this was a survey that we had conducted in February, and we have the results of it that I'm going to talk about today. So, and it was middle school and high school that the survey was administered to, and we focused on substance that were alcohol, tobacco, and prescription drugs. And we tried to pull out positive points of the data, as opposed to, you know, who is using the most, we tried to look at who wasn't using. So those are some positive things. And then we also did an online survey that John helped us send out, and it was 183 surveys that were completed, 113 were from high school parents, and then 70 were from middle school parents, and we had that survey opened from March to May. So, so these are some of the goals that we have, and we are looking to, again, gather information on the four substances listed, and they were referred to as ATOD, which is, again, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. And we used some national data, which was used, it was monitoring the future study, and then we compared it to our North Reading data. And, and again, we're required to report on these four substances, which, again, are listed above and part of the federal grant. So this is student past 30-day non-use, and this is the percentage of students who didn't use in the past 30 days. So again, we are really trying to highlight the high numbers, and there are quite, there is quite a range and quite a lot of high numbers, and 100% of is, of course, non-use.
Leah, you said the number of parents, do you have the number of students who responded, or was that number you gave us students?
It was parents originally, and then it was, I think there was only, I don't know exactly what the number was, but we did have, have pretty good turnout for students. There was some missing, but I want to say it was under 100 that weren't, that were either not completed, or we couldn't use the data from, just based on what was on the scan sheet.
And who do we, just who do we survey? What grade, do we survey, all grades in high school?
Six, yeah, middle school and high school, so six through 12.
Okay, great.
Yep. And so sixth graders and eighth graders reported the highest percentage of non-use, and you can look, the grades are at the top, and then the substances are on the left. And 12th graders reported the lowest percentage of non-use across all substances when compared to all grades. This next side is parents' perception of child's past 30-day non-use. So this is what, how their parents perceived their child using. And the sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade parents reported 100% perception of non-use across all substances, so that's meaning that they had the lowest perceived use. And parents of 12th grade students had the lowest perception of non-use across all substances, meaning 12th graders had the highest perception of perceived use. And again, this is what, this is part of the parent's survey, so how they felt. This is students' perception of risk or harm, and this is the percentage of students who said they perceived using substances as a moderate or great risk. And tobacco was reported highest as having the moderate or great risk by eighth graders, and then marijuana was reported lowest as having moderate or great risk by 12th graders. So those are kind of the high and low points that we picked out. This is the parent perception of risk or harm, and this is the percent of parents who perceive their child using the substance as moderate or great risk, so similar to the last one. This is the parent's perception. We recognize there are many duplicate numbers, but we did actually recalculate the data, so we're not exactly sure if that's something on Pride's end, but we do realize that there are quite a few duplicate numbers. And seventh grade parents perceive prescription drug use as lowest-ranked substance for moderate or great risk. And then eighth, ninth, and 10th grade parents perceive tobacco, marijuana, and prescription drugs as the highest-ranked substances, substances for moderate or great risk. So again, those are kind of the high points that we're picking out. So this was the students' perception of their parents' disapproval, so this was, again, surveying the students of how they felt their parents felt about their drug use. And it was, the term is wrong or very wrong, so if their parents would perceive that their use was wrong or very wrong. And alcohol is actually the only substance on here that's not recorded at 100% disapproval rate, meaning that their, students didn't think that their parents fully disapproved at, up to 100%. And that was across all grades. And then prescription drugs had the highest parent disapproval rate, according to students. So students feel like the parent had most disapproved of prescription drugs, and most cuffed, in a sense, alcohol use. This is student perception of accessibility, and this is the percent of students who perceive substances as fairly easy or easy to get. And marijuana was reported as the least accessible substance at 2.8% accessibility, which was reported by seventh graders. And then alcohol was reported as the easiest substance to obtain across grade levels, it was all grade levels, and 65.9% of 12th graders reported it was easy or very easy to get, and that's a pretty high number, that it's, it's pretty accessible to 12th graders. And then 8% of sixth graders reported that alcohol was very easy or easy to get, and was reported, reported as the most accessible substance use in the sixth grade, or accessible substance. And again, those are kind of the high and low points. This was, this slide was interesting. This was about where students use substances, so we tracked different locations, and unfortunately there is another category, but we don't know what that contains. So out of those, the top two places to use substances on average across all grade levels, and we looked at all of the reported data, and then we picked out the top two. So a friend's house was reported as the most popular place to use substances, and that was, again, across all grade levels, and it was at 17.7%. And that is really quite the highest. It's such a jump from the other ones. And then alcohol was reported as the highest percentage of use, so out of all of the drugs that, where they were used in the top two places, alcohol was the highest percentage of those four substances that were, that we were tracking. And then, again, like I had mentioned, other, so other for prescription drugs was reported lowest, but we, again, don't have that additional information where that location was. And then prescription drugs are the only substance reported being used in the school in the most popular place category, so that's the only area that had a one or two, and it was prescription drugs for the school. And then there were all substances used, they were reported as being used at school, so, and these were all, all of the substances were reported in kind of all of these categories, but again, these were just the top two. So this is what I had mentioned briefly in the beginning. This is North Reading data versus national past 30-day percent non-use, and this was, again, from the monitoring of future study, and the data was only collected in eighth, 10th, eighth, 10th, and 12th grade. So you'll see at the top, it's eighth grade, 10th grade, and 12th grade. And North Reading substance use reported as higher than the national average when data was available, except the alcohol use for 10th and 12th grades, and then marijuana use among 12th graders. So those are pretty much the high points of the pride surveys that we had conducted. And next, we just have some next steps, and I'm just going to point out a few of them that are on here. And in, in the handouts that you guys have in front of you, the first page is the seven strategies for community change, and that's just one I'm going to point out. So that's one we're going to work on using more effectively to implement the prevention strategies based on this survey data. Or I'm sorry, it's after the slides, it's the first handout after the slides, sorry about that. Yeah, sorry, it's a separate packet.
Do you all have yours?
Yeah.
Do you have it?
And then we're also planning to partner with schools to increase their protective factors and decrease risk factors, and that's the second page of the handout. And those are just some examples of both. And then, so the other thing we're going to do is refocus the 12-month action plan to include more heavily alcohol. So when we originally did it, we didn't focus too, too much on alcohol, that was still one of the drugs that we're focused on, but we just realized how high, how high of a percentage there is of alcohol use in 12th grade and across all grades, so that's something we're going to look into and try to do more prevention strategies off of. Some additional next steps, just in terms of the survey itself, we're going to present the pride data to the Board of Selectmen on September 5th, and then we're going to eventually do a NORCAN taping in August to get these results out as well. And then we're going to partner with NRPS Health Education to provide data that can help support curriculum. And we are in the process of getting some curricular, curriculum to one of the health teachers to have, you know, to work that into the health education. A few conclusions. So based on the data, we saw that use really peaks at grade 12, and 93.1% of students see tobacco as the most harmful substance, which was interesting, and then 27.3% of students see marijuana as the least substance, least harmful substance. So again, those are some highs and lows that we picked out. And a few more, as students age, the perception of parental disapproval of substance use declines, which we had seen in a couple of the slides. And again, alcohol was reported as the easiest substance to obtain, and it was across all grade levels, and then the 65.9% of 12th graders who reported it was easy or very easy to get, which, again, is a pretty high number. And just to reiterate, the most popular place to use substances is at a friend's house. So that was something that was interesting as well, that just when we looked at where the use was actually going on, and it was pretty high at a friend's house. So that's all I have for this piece, and then there are the handouts, and then you guys have the slides in front of you, but are there any questions I can answer for the board right now, or?
Anything from the committee? Make sure you have a microphone.
No.
Just getting away from them.
Yes. Thank you. So I just have two quick questions.
Okay.
Or a suggestion. Number one, did you not, I'm guessing this is all you asked about, but did you not ask where they're actually getting it from? You asked where it's being used, but not where it's, who's providing them?
Yep, and that's one of the questions. So we used a survey that was already kind of pre-populated, all the questions. There was a section that we could do 10 additional questions, and we are looking at that, to do that for the next year, because this was our first time doing it, so it was a work in progress. So it is, that's exactly what we realized, that we need that question to maybe add in, and it would be hard to kind of narrow down, because we could only give them so many answers, but yes, that is a great point, that we need to include that.
Okay. And then, and then particularly since we're the school committee, two of the next steps were partnering with the school.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you mentioned you were going to talk to one of the health teachers, are there, are there other ways in which you think the school can be of assistance with this?
I think we're, we are still working on that. We are planning on doing a workshop, which is guiding good choices, and we're partnering with, partnering with the school. So that could be something that's helpful, and it's working with families to also kind of talk about substance use and how to talk to your kids and families alike. So we're doing that, and then we're also just going to try to plan to do the survey again, to administer it again, to get more results. But we are, those are, that's another thing we're working on, to kind of see where we can get our resources and what we can do with them, so.
Thank you. Yes.
Just to follow up on that question, Rita and I just came from a youth services meeting where we met with all three of the elementary school principals, which was a great opportunity for us, because typically we work mostly with middle school and high school, and I think Chief Murphy would agree with this, that an opportunity really lies with earlier education around this topic. We have a pretty decent grant going on here, and we are willing to invest that in whatever it takes to have a captive audience, and that captive audience mostly takes place at the schools. Understanding that the teachers and the principals are asked an awful lot to cram a lot of curriculum in a short period of time, we understand that. But are there some natural opportunities where we could perhaps hire a contractor to come in and teach, I don't want to use this term, but like a dare-like program, where we would be funding that through the DFC entirely, but have, make sure that it's uniform across all three elementary schools? I think that that would be really important. When we were talking to the principals today, they seemed open to the concept, provided that the schedule allowed for that, so I think that's something we'll be looking at for year two. By the way, year two for us begins October 1, so just throwing that out there. Leah had mentioned that we are providing some curriculum opportunities for a health teacher, and that health teacher is in the middle school, so we're providing specifically, and I'm sure you'll get the donation request coming soon, around $2,000 of equipment. And that equipment includes things like marijuana goggles and really tangible, interactive pieces for the middle school level. So those are some really specific things. However, we obviously love the health department here, and, you know, we're really big advocates of anything that is around increasing those protective factors, helping students with their refusal skills. Claudia Brown would love this conversation right now. Any way that we can support that at a bigger scale, you know, having, having the state supports that curriculum, making sure that that's part of the curriculum at a younger age. I think that high school does a great job of that, but unfortunately, I would, I would personally love to see that at a younger age, you know, not just middle school, but even perhaps in the elementary school. So how can we introduce that at an age-appropriate level? You know, talking about dating situations perhaps might not be an appropriate conversation at the elementary level, but can we introduce general concepts around refusal skills and increasing protective factors? So I hope that answered that a little bit more clearly, specifically, but any opportunities that, you know, this committee, I know you're in a planning session right now, if you can identify that, where the DFC grant could help you out with that, we're open to that conversation. Mr. Bernard and I were talking about parent university, there's an opportunity there, certainly for us to partner. That was on our 12-month action plan, and I know that's on Mr. Bernard's plan, so that was a great thing to come up. Screenagers is another thing that Mr. Bernard had an idea about, and we're like, well, are you thinking about that? Let's figure that out together. So anything that comes up in your planning process, write it down, and, you know, Mr. Bernard talks to us almost daily, I think, sometimes.
It's pretty regular.
Yeah, pretty regular. So we're happy to help out with that.
I had a question. I was a little surprised, and this is, I guess, for everybody, including the chief, I was a little surprised at the, we had a much lower non-use percentage rate at the 12th grade for both alcohol and marijuana. So I'm looking at that, and I'm saying, is it the demographics of the town, because North Reading's a well-off town, and what, I was just surprised at that? Or is it just because this is the first time we've done the survey, and it's not, we don't have years of data? I guess I was surprised at that.
Can we flip to the slide, Leah?
It's the first one, yeah?
No, it was when you compared to, compared to the national, the comparison to the, I think it was right near the end.
Page five, I think it was.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one right there. I mean, you see, like, with alcohol, only 48% had non-use the past three days, and 66 national, and the marijuana. I mean, I was just wondering, would it be a one-time thing?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to, the next survey, I think, would either solidify these numbers, or maybe an anomaly of this particular class, we're just not sure.
But I ask that because we seem to have, I know we do have an opioid, like every town has an opioid problem, but we seem to have a better handle on it than some of the surrounding communities, if you look at the number of deaths, number of overdoses, et cetera. So that kind of surprised me.
Well, yeah, I don't know that I totally agree with what you said, only because you don't, we don't give data out on overdoses, so to speak, but ours is pretty consistent, based upon the population in our town.
Right.
With, you know, the larger cities, it's pretty consistent, the percentages wise. So, you know, it's just probably not something that gets publicized, but our opiate problem is the same as the next town, the state, and pretty much the whole country. So we're, we're right on par with that. You know, this, as you can see, there's no data on, it looks like it's just prescription use, I wish we could actually just test specifically on opiates.
I was going to ask that, right.
Because that would, I mean, that's obviously our biggest prescription drug problem-
Right.
...right now, that's affecting, obviously, people's lives. So, and I, I look at this, though, and I, I guess the biggest number to me is the marijuana use.
Yeah.
And I, and I look at the perceptions from what the parents perceive their kid's use is, and then, and then the kid's actual use. Would have loved to have done this before this was legalized last year, just to see how much just the legalization impact was on the use.
Yeah.
Because I would say it's, I mean, we're guessing, but I would say that it definitely spiked the use.
Yeah.
Because, you know, essentially, it's, if it's legal, it can't be bad for you. But then we look at tobacco, which is legal, but there's the perception that it's really, really bad for you.
Of course, we've had, and after that campaign over the years, it had the commercials and, you know.
Well, I guess, I guess that's where we look at all of these other things, too, is there has been that campaign against tobacco.
Right.
And we've talked about this in our last meeting, is that's what we need to get out And we've talked about this in our last meeting, is that's what we need to get out on all of these drugs, because zero percent is what we need.
Right.
And, you know, I think that that's where, you know, we talk about our little group here. We've been advocating with the DA's office and anybody we could talk to about the Board of Education actually coming out with mandated curriculum for everybody across the state. I don't know if it would ever happen, but we could certainly use some sort of support to try to start to push that agenda, too. Because you guys can only do what you can do, you have only so much time to fit whatever it is we can fit.
Right.
We don't like to see an option. We want it to see it be mandated, because it gives everybody at least a chance. You know, because a lot of times, when I deal with kids, it's after the fact, and it's hard to, you know, now go back in time. But, you know, I think the early education, obviously, based upon what we see, is critical.
On your point, it'll be interesting to see when we do this the next time, what kind of numbers we get. But I do think the legalization had an impact on it. Jerry?
Just clarify this for me. On page four, the student perception of accessibility, it appears that from the high school, nine through 12, they perceive obtaining marijuana easier than obtaining tobacco. Am I reading that right, or? Yes. I mean, I find that, as a follow-up to, that seems unusual, that it would be easier to get marijuana than it would be to get tobacco.
You could, yeah, you can...
The other thing is, we don't know who's actually seeking tobacco, though. So, you know, that's where the survey really does, you know, it's just a survey, but how many kids are actually looking, we know that there's vaping going on, but how many kids are actually looking to get tobacco at this point? And how many are actually looking to get marijuana? So I think that all has to come into play, and we'd never get an accurate number on that.
The other thing is, Jerry, too, is that if you go into a store, if they're enforcing the, isn't it 18 now, the law?
Twenty-one.
It's 21, okay, I thought it was 18. It should be 18. Rita?
If I can respond to that, though, you're right, exactly what you said. If you're gonna buy tobacco, you have to go to the store to get it.
Right.
You usually don't go to the drug dealer down the street, at her house. Now, at your friend's house, or the school, or the parks, wherever you get it.
Exactly, right.
They'll sell to anybody.
Right.
So I think that's a pretty honest answer, to be honest with you.
I mean, you have to go to a real store to buy tobacco products. You can't just see your buddy at Ipswich Park.
Well, yeah, most of the kids don't have, they love their weed, but they don't have mild-marrow and Lucky Strike.
Exactly.
Can I add into that? Chief had mentioned, related to the tobacco uses, that, you know, we saw a major drop when there was advertising against it. But another really significant factor was when we imposed higher taxes on it. They saw a direct correlation nationally to an increase of taxes, by the way, which can be regulated locally and at state level as well, to a decrease in use. We saw that, which is an interesting conversation right now, as our state has just decided about what the taxation is gonna be on marijuana. So the higher the taxes, the lower the use. We know that correlation exists, not just advertising. It's a really big factor, and we can't underestimate that. The other thing I just want to add is, related to that perception of use, this is a community issue, and you had asked about that 12th grade number. We know anecdotally that there is a casual attitude about alcohol use in this town. We know that. I'm not speaking just in high school, I'm saying in general, whether it be in the leagues, things that, you know, Rita works on. We know that, we have that somewhat documented, somewhat don't, to be honest with you. This is a community issue, and the community needs to decide, is almost fifty-two percent of our 12th graders using alcohol acceptable? The community needs to decide that. And if you're in this room saying no, then it's kind of self-evident about what we need to focus on. But we know that there's a lot of public no's and a lot of private yeses. And we know that through parties, that the police have to break up. We know that through the text messages. We know that through where kids are posting on social media where they were that weekend, holding a solo cup. We know that anecdotally, it's very difficult to track. But this is a community issue, and one that, you know, I think CIT and the schools are really primed to partner with, also with the police, also with leagues, also with parent groups, with everybody across the board. So the more people that can become aware of this, and that's why we're really looking forward to bringing this information publicly, and to say, this is not a school problem, this is not a police problem, this is not a youth services problem, this is our problem. And if our unified answer to that question about fifty-two percent, or a little bit more of our seniors using alcohol is not acceptable, then we can move forward there. But when we have that differentiation of publicly saying, yes, that's a problem, and privately saying no, is where we struggle.
And I think that, you know, this time of year, over the last six weeks, is the most difficult with the graduation parties, the high school graduation parties. And I'm not a prude, and neither is my wife, but I'm always amazed when we'll go to a graduation party, and I'm like, what the heck?
Well, may I just mention that we are pursuing for town meeting, social host ordinance, which is different than social host liability, that's a civil fine. This will be something where the police can have a little bit more power in issuing fines. So we're looking forward to that. We've seen that being effective in other communities that are similar to ours. But there's been discussion about, is a fine going to be enough? You know, up to $300, is that really gonna make an impact? Or does that have to be public? That Rita Mullen hosted a party, and you know what, she got cited with that.
Her parties are great, though.
Her parties are great. So there's been some really interesting discussion, and I just encourage everybody to attend town meeting.
So that's separate than the ordinance that we already have.
Social host ordinance is a civil matter. This will be allowing the police to issue fines.
See, I think the $300 fine isn't a big deal, but making it public is...
That's the general consensus, yeah.
And I think what you just said, every one of us have gone to a lot of graduation parties.
Right.
Like you said, and I wind up leaving early every time I go, excited that you're going, but when I see the sixteen-year-old kids and seventeen-year-old kids, like they said, walking around with a red cup, and that the parents are allowing it, because it's the graduation party and the young kids there. If you're the only one that keeps saying, you know, it's all right, because you stay there, you stay there and enjoy it, and you talk to the kids that have the cup. I can't do it, I have to leave, so, because to stay there means I think it's okay. And I think if you have this social ordinance one, you're now telling the town that you're not supposed to do it. And I just recently went through a town that, I don't know if it was their school or their youth service, but they had those paintings, the signs you stick in the ground that say, and it was the social host they talked about in their thing, remember? The social host law, and it was something like, you know, if you're not helping your children to host the parties, and it was, you know, something that basically said it. So I go, oh my God, the town's saying it. So you may feel kind of silly the next time they do invite you, or invite you, or invite you, and they're allowing the kids to drink at the parties. It's becoming acceptable. And if our town is the first one to say it's not, and I go back to when we cut the, one of the things we were talking about earlier with these principals there, that I would love to see the health teacher, the DARE teacher back, like we had it when they were in the third, fourth grade, that the police went in and talked about them. Because you'll still meet kids today, because I've been on youth service committees for thirty years, or the original DARE that they had it, that you still see kids today, and they repeat things that we talked about in those days. And just like when they cut the music and the arts in the school, that all of a sudden you notice the band dropped off, and how pathetic it was when you saw four or five poor little band kids.
Yeah.
And it was, what are we doing wrong? And then they added it back in, and they said, you're not gonna see it immediately, it's gonna take five or six years, and sure enough, you did. You saw the band come back.
Yep.
What Amy said about the smoking, when they did all the advertising nationally about what smoking does to your health, that kids stopped and the tobacco sales went down, so that they had to market it and find different ways, and now they're into the vaping and this and that. I think if our town can be the first to try to intelligently work it into the schools, but you say, it's not just, it's not a school problem, it's not a police problem, it's the parents that also come to league games, and they've done it in high schools, they've done it at the parks, they come to league, you know, with the Red Solo Cup night. And they've done it at different ones, that we have to, every once in a while, send people out and let us out and remind them not to do it. If you say that it's okay, like you go to these games and you see these things, and you don't say anything, then people think it's okay. But if we start to, it's the parents that have to do something about it. We have to let the parents know, it's not cool.
Yep.
And there aren't too many parents that are gonna say to the host, it's all right. They're not gonna say that.
Well, I think that the data, the fact that the highest percentage of students, that this is taking place at a friend's house, whether there's a party happening or parents are working and kids are not supervised, I mean, I think that, again, you know, tells us that, you know, something should be done.
But they're home, they are home.
Well, to that point, on that next survey question, that might be one of the follow-up questions. When you're having these in-home drinking, whatever, even if it's one person, are the parents home or not? I think that would be telling.
But I think it's telling when they're sixteen-year-old, when they have the birthday parties for the sixteen-year-olds and seventeen-year-olds, and the next day, the parents wind up with the beer cans all around, and that same parent allows another party the next week, and the next week, and the next week, for different things. The parents do, I think we have to be honest with ourselves and know that we have a lot of parents in town that don't think it's that bad. And they allow it, because they'll take the keys, or they do this, and they let them sleep over. If the, unless you've sent out a letter to everybody that you invited to the party saying, by the way, I'm gonna allow people to drink at my house, and I'm gonna ask them to take the keys, you don't know that your parent, your child's going to a house of the party, you know, is allowing to do it, because parents are allowing the kids to do it, and they'll, I'll stay upstairs so I don't go down and find them. And I'm sure the chief can tell you nightmare stories about the parents that he fights with, that when something does happen, and they go to them, and the parents say, no, not my kid.
Any other comments?
That's all I have, and I just wanted to mention in the pack what I did give to all of you. We have National Night Out coming up on August 1st, so it's just a community-wide event, and we're involving law enforcement, so Chief Murphy's, all those people, and then the community, just to bring people together and kind of work on some stuff together, so.
Mr. Bernard?
Just a comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. I just want to publicly thank Leah and Amy and Chief Murphy for the work that they do, whether it's through Youth Services or through the Community Impact Team, or both, with the schools. We benefit a great deal. Mr. Buckley asked about, you know, things that we might be able to do. There's a lot going on in our schools. Both the Community Impact Team and Youth Services are very, I think, fully integrated in our schools, but obviously, there's more work to be done. But I think the good thing about both organizations, Community Impact Team and Youth Services, is that we're always looking at what we might be able to do differently or more. And I think the grant acquisition was significant, there's no doubt about it. And Leah has been, you know, doing some nice work to try and integrate herself into the schools and into the community, and kind of identify where the weak spots are. And kind of, we're now in the, kind of, the recommendation stage, looking at things that we need to do, either extending work that we're already doing, but now we have the resources to do that. And I think that's become very refreshing, I'll say for me, as someone who sits on the CIT board and works with all of these folks and others, Rita, of course, too. You know, we're excited, we're, I think in some ways, we're kind of, you know, dissatisfied or displeased that we even have to be addressing these kinds of things. But I see them as, you know, these are opportunities, and we now have resources behind us to really, I think, make an impact. So it'll be very interesting to me when we administer the PRIDE or a similar survey in a year-plus time, somewhere, you know, whatever, I guess we were saying, next spring?
Fall of '18.
Fall of '18, thank you. Oh, that's right, too, thank you, fall of '18. It'll be interesting, now that we have some good benchmark data, to kind of measure our successes, you know, along the way, I hope, with the work that we're gonna be doing over the course of the next year plus.
To Chief Murphy's point, you know, we don't want to ignore alcohol, marijuana abuse, et cetera, but what about the opioid issue? I know, I don't think this grant specifically referred to opioids, correct?
It's the four, correct? Amy, there's the four areas only that the grant can support.
Yeah, the prescription drugs is including opioids. It includes Adderall, yeah.
We talked about that, yeah.
So that will be the next step. To be honest with you, and Chief can chime in on this, our anecdotal evidence is showing that overdoses related to opiates are not happening at the '18 level. It's happening really around the late twenties and mid thirties. But we're trying to get that before that. So if kids are starting to experiment with Adderall, perk thirties, early on, then that's where we can kind of see that data. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I agree, it doesn't just go to opiates. I mean, there's a progression, whether it's marijuana, or Adderall, or other, you know, low-prescription drugs. So, and typically, you know, they just get them out of the medicine cabinet, unused prescription drugs that are just sitting there. So, and, you know, they certainly sample with, you know, their other friends and whatnot. But the opiates, you know, there's a progression there at some point. You know, but we just can't pinpoint. So I don't know if we necessarily need to pinpoint it as well, because I think we had done a survey, and we did ask specifically about opiates, and the data was just all over the place. It was either low, and it was giving us a false reading of actually what was happening. So, you know, I don't know how we would do that, because you'd go on forever, you know, naming each prescription drug, and, you know, marijuana's simple. Marijuana, and alcohol's simple, it's alcohol. So, you know, the prescription drug, and we've talked about that, how do we know where we should be targeting? But the bottom line is, prescription drugs, unless it's prescribed to you, you should not be taking it. And that's kind of where we need to set that, you know, that benchmarking, go from there.
Where I would like to see some things separated out, though, is around edibles, first of all, and vaping, and also vaping marijuana. So those are some areas where we could do some more breakout to learn that, because that tobacco number includes vaping, but I really would like to see more of a breakdown on that as well. I don't think in our town, we see that much of chewing tobacco necessarily at this age, at the younger ages, but I'd like to see that broken out, too. And certainly, the edibles that are accessible over the internet that are laced with marijuana, we really need to look at that seriously. That's so easy to get, you know, with a gift card that you have, you know, a Visa gift card that you got for graduating eighth grade, and you can buy it online, it's ridiculous.
I'll watch the kids that put it on weight.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks for your...
Can we ask for your support at the, when we get ready with the Warren article?
He did help me, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
That you'd wanted to...
Yeah, I was...
Would we get closer, that at least if the school committee debated it, and if you came out and said, I thought it was a good idea...
Yeah, if you're gonna do that ordinance, I would say, come here.
We would like...
Present it to us, so that we can...
Yeah, we would like time on that, okay. Okay, thank you.
Can I, thank you, folks.
Leah, you put out a calendar with Amy that we asked to come for presentation once we get closer on the ordinance, the school committee.
Yes.
Is that something that we'd like to, obviously, review and hopefully make a recommendation on, if you're gonna ask?
Sure. Yeah, I'm actually working with a legal counsel right now. So it's technically a bylaw, and I'm working with the legal counsel, and we just got the first draft back, and then I'm hoping to finalize it, if we can. I guess it's very specific as to what we can even do, so.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, Rita. Hey.
No, I don't have the slides, I only have...
Next, we have a slew, a slew of policies to look at and review. So the policy committee is Scott and Julie, right?
No.
Scott and Janine.
Yes.
Sorry, Janine.
That's all right.
I know Julie really wanted to be on Policy Committee, and Janine nosed her out for that last seat.
We'll begin with Jay.
Pardon me? Yeah, exactly. So, John, I don't know if you want to lead this, or Scott, or Janine, or...
Bernard can lead it.
Sure, before I turn it over to Mr. Connolly, this is his wheelhouse, the Student Activity Funds Policy. So I think, based on the recent audit, and Michael certainly can speak to more specifically about this, but Michael came to me, and ultimately, we brought to the subcommittee, Mr. Buckley and Ms. Imbriano, some recommended changes that we want to codify, we're recommending to you that we codify in a policy. It is a lengthy one, because it incorporates a handbook, so to speak, a set of regulations to go along with the policy. I want to thank and commend Ms. Imbriano and Mr. Buckley for the time that they gave to working with Michael and I on this. It was having four sets of eyes looking at it, was, I think, very helpful. So I think what we have in front of you tonight is a pretty substantial draft of our recommendation, and I think Michael's prepared to talk to you a little bit about it, and maybe answer any questions that you might have as well.
So, yeah, what, as Mr. Bernard just highlighted, what really drove some of the change in policy was, partly, the student activity regulations were updated over the last few years, and we are required to have an outside auditor, you know, certified CPA for student activity accounts at least once every three years. So that was something, when the regulations changed, we kind of worked into our schedule. They were audited internally last year, and the town accountant helped perform that audit. So this was the year we chose to have the outside auditors come in. We had engaged the firm, the Lansing Heat, to come in...
Oh, thank you.
And perform the audit. And I do think the audit went well, given it was our first outside audit that we had had on the student activity accounts for a number of years. I'm gonna say, maybe almost a decade. So, you know, the effort is to kind of, obviously, be in compliance with the new regulations of having this done once every three years, so we're now gonna be on that every-three-year cycle. And then the findings, there were five findings that were highlighted in the separate round copy that I think really was the driver behind some of the procedural changes that we're recommending this evening, and that we'll discuss at the policy subcommittee meeting. The other thing that we also took care of in this round of recommended changes The other thing that we also took care of in this round of recommended changes was a lot of kind of house-dressing items. We noticed there was a series of kind of grammatical-type inconsistencies that needed to be addressed in terms of editorial changes and creating greater consistency throughout the document on capitalization and word phrases and so forth. So that was also addressed, or attempted to be addressed, throughout the meeting that we did have as well. So, you know, I can certainly take, you know, prepared to take questions on some of the findings. I will say, you know, anytime you have a finding, it might seem like, oh, you know what, there's a finding, I'm doing something, something, you know, wrong, and I think, you know, I've been through several student activity, CPA, outside audits of student activity funds in several other districts, and I will say, having only four or five findings is, was actually pretty good. So they, even though there are things we need to address, and we're working to make sure that happens, I think it's fair to say, Melanson Heath and the auditors that came out did feel like, you know, things were in good shape, and some of the things that we're addressing procedurally, that there's a need to procedurally address them in the actual policy. Some of the things we're actually already doing, but they just weren't in the policy or in the handbook, and they wanted to see that happen more formally. And some of the things, it's necessary to kind of take to the next level, that we need to, you know, work on, and we're prepared to do that. For example, you know, there was need to add some language that student activity accounts need to be approved on an annual basis by the school committee. So you may recall, we have not really been doing that, that's a regulation change that occurred over these last few years. We've been doing that as new accounts have been requested, we have that presentation, and we vote to approve that new account, but they, the regulations state that, kind of, on an annual basis, the school committee should kind of receive a report or a breakdown of the active accounts, and should actually take a vote of approval. So we reference that in the document, and we will be prepared to do that this fall. You know, there were other type of things to address in the findings, you know, some of the other things that they want to see happen is also periodic reports out to the school committee on either account balances or so forth, so that was something that, you know, we were kind of doing maybe once annually, they want to see that done maybe twice or quarterly, and they wanted us to actually include the account balances in that report. So there was, there was reference in some of the reporting reconciliation language in the procedure manual, mainly DK dash R, that we have added. You know, some of the other items, I'll highlight, was around student travel and field trips. They just wanted to see a greater level of consistency by actually formalizing an approval form of ensuring that all field trips were, you know, approved by the school principal, and those that require school committee approval, that there's evidence of that as well, which we did, which we did show, but they actually wanted to see a kind of, an authorization form added to our procedures and our policy, which we've done. So I think, you know, there's also a need or request when field trips and major, you know, foreign travel trips are complete, that there's a, you know, a statement of accountability is what they refer to in the audit report, or, you know, a field trip income and expense report is kind of turned in by that class advisor responsible, and that's also documented and filed with the other receipts and expenses for that, for that trip. So these are things that will certainly require some additional training, which we'll do this fall, to the club advisors and club treasurers involved in student activity accounts, as well as the school secretaries and so forth, but we are, you know, certainly will be prepared to do that. And I think really what this, the changes are addressing are those four to five findings in the audit report, you know, some of it's just creating greater clarity on some of the forms we were using. You know, one example of that is we certainly had a, you know, a turnover receipt form or a request for an expense form, and they wanted to clearly see, you know, the level of authority of those folks, the principal and so forth, approving that expense, and we actually, we actually added lines for them to approve as opposed to them, they were just kind of initialing on that form. So we just kind of made things a little bit more clear based on their recommendations. And, you know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, with the changes that we're recommending, we'll certainly address a lot of the findings, and bring us into compliance with the new regulations. So that being said, I guess I'll turn it over, any?
Any questions, comments?
The only, only one comment I would have, is, Mr. Bernard, maybe, I know it was helpful for me, is just seeing the red line form sometimes, when, just to be able to compare the two documents. And there's a whole new policy, obviously not, but, you know, on some of these, you know, just to, I think it'd help the committee just to see the changes that we made.
Sure, yeah, as opposed to attaching the old.
Yeah, I mean, just to see the red lines.
Well, that was my big question, is what are the, what are some of the changes?
Yeah, I mean, I can walk you through some of them.
Why are we calling it, well, I don't, I don't need you, but some of the major ones, and why are we calling it new instead of revised? Because it's not a new policy, we already had a policy.
A new version?
Yeah, I think it was just, it was just to try to, yeah, that was just our.
It'll be a revised policy?
Yeah, we were just trying to draw a distinction between what was the existing policy, DK.
And then the final question that I had, even though, you know, I'm an advocate, and some of the things in this audit were some of my concerns, and I'm glad to see those addressed, but are we, are we overburdening people here at all with this policy? Are we putting too many things in place to make it too difficult to collect and report on student activity funds?
It's great, we've had conversations with the administrative team and the principals, and I don't think so. I think, I think we already have the system and the structure in place, and in some cases, it's, it's taking things to a little bit to the next, the next step or the next level, or formalizing some of the procedures, but I think it certainly, you know, can be addressed and can be handled, and, you know, I think there's key things that we, you know, that, based on the regulations, we need to just make sure that we're documenting, and that's, you know, the authorization of approval of field trips. You know, I think, I think the biggest change procedurally that I think is going to be felt at the teacher or the, the club advisor level is just documenting, you know, when there is a receipt turnover, we weren't always getting that, that class student roster, so they talk about this premium of receipts or having that student roster. I think it was happening, there's no question about it, it was, it was happening at the classroom teacher or club advisor level, but that necessarily always wasn't being forwarded to the principal for filing in the, you know, behind the receipt turnover with the receipt. We were documenting that there was 24 students that paid $25, and here's the cash, but they actually wanted to see the actual student roster, here are the folks, so I think it's a matter of just, you know, retraining and re-getting the teachers in the habit of just copying that form and just sending that in. So it's, it might be a little bit extra work on their part, but, you know, I think it's, I think we can get there.
And what about, what about things like, if you see, you often see students out to the Stop and Shop, or the Dunkin' Donuts, they're collecting money in a can.
Yeah.
Right, or a bucket? What are the, I know there was something in here, but I don't quite remember, what are the regulations going to be around that, and how are those reported, and what?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's just, that's, again, just making sure that when there is going to be approved fundraisers by authorized student clubs on behalf of, you know, doing the fundraiser on behalf of the school district, if it's a student club, that that fundraiser form, which is completed and approved by the principal, and then it's actually sent down to our office, which we file, we keep a binder of those, is there and documented, and that, there's an understanding when that club is approved, that if they're going to be doing revenue-generating fundraisers, that there's an understanding of what, what they're going to be doing.
Is that new, the form, or do we already have that?
That form has been in place.
Because one of the things that I think would be good, and my colleagues may disagree, and you two may disagree, is if we have a form or request, someone's, the cheerleaders are going to be out at Dunkin' Donuts, or the lacrosse team is going to be selling, or the football team's going to be selling cards door-to-door, it might be good at a school committee meeting just to let people know, because, you know, you go, you're sitting in your house, and you got some kids coming by, and, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to give advance notice that some of those things are going to be happening, at least in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's some, you know, challenges in trying to look at all those and get the word out and communicate.
Timing sometimes.
Timing, the timing of it, sometimes they're.
I'm not talking, like, all, but when, when the kid, when the, when they're going out, the maskers have kids out collecting money. They have no uniform, they have no identification, they have no name tag, there's not, there's no proof, and I'm not saying we have kids out running around trying to collect money, but there's no identification or evidence of who they are. That's, to me, that's an issue. I might be the only one who feels that way, but.
I mean, well, Mr. West, on your three points, and the last one first, I mean, perhaps, maybe even just having something where anybody that's doing a fundraiser, just on a web page, just has, like, these are the ones that are going on right now, that somebody could just look, or just a card that says, like, oh, yeah, I go to this website to prove who I, who I am, or whatever, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, but.
Yeah.
On your other, on your first two points, I think we were very careful about trying to make sure that we kept, kept this as narrowly defined as we could, we just wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with the audit, and I think, in general, it seems like everything was being done, and more than anything, we wanted to make sure that we're protecting everybody, because whenever you're looking at the use of funds, you want to make sure that, it's not just because the auditor's telling us to do this, we want to make sure that students are doing it the right way, teachers are doing it the right way, and nobody makes an innocent error and, in some way, ends up looking suspicious, and so I think a lot of it was just clarifying what forms, the procedure, who approves it, who it goes through, and so I think a lot of the clarifications were really just clarifications of what's going on.
Yeah, I did, I did consider printing the track changes version, because we made so many little grammatical and capitalization consistencies, it was, it did seem hard to follow, but I, you know, I think.
In the end, we decided, I decided.
Yeah.
It was, it was so cluttered that it was almost difficult to follow, but.
Yes, but I think the biggest changes of some of the ones I highlighted are, you know, the items that specifically spoke to those five audit findings, it was mainly, that was language that was added. You know, I can give you some examples, like on page two, and, you know, part B, there were statements that were added that would just require the school committee to take a vote annually, as I said, as I said earlier, of an approval of each student activity fund. You know, on page 10, under the, the language for reporting and reconciliations, you're going to see language added to, to document the bank reconciliation process, and there was a need to take that reconciliation process that in a lot of ways we were already doing, we just weren't formalizing that with a certified signed form by the people that were involved. So to those types of things that you will find addressed.
And the only other point, your other point was about students collecting money with cans. We had a conversation about where that money's stored, and not letting students take money home, and making sure that, that it's hand, turned over to the advisor, so that it's not, money's not going home with students, because we also want to protect the students as well, that are collecting money, to make sure that they're not accused of doing anything. So it was just tightening up a lot of things, and, and some of the definitions, just if it's a defined term, making sure that, you know, student funds, that student activity funds, and just clarifying that throughout, so.
It is rare, but we actually had that happen about 10 years ago, I think it was, Mel, where some kid was going around.
Oh, no, that, the kid was collecting money for, and.
Yeah, that was about, yeah, that was about 14 years ago.
14 years ago?
I think it was my first, first and second year as a principal.
Yeah, yeah.
I was one of the victims.
I know who the kid was.
I was one of the victims, and I, and I gave cash.
Yeah, he was going around collecting money, saying he was from.
Maskers, I think.
Maskers, I think it was.
It was. Julie?
So how was he found out? So A4 and A5, does this pertain to school-based field trips, or just, like, school-club field trips?
When you say A4, A5.
The last two, the field trip.
Oh, you're on the forms.
Oh, the form?
The forms, like, are those forms that principals must submit just for, you know, a field trip to a farm, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, well, yeah.
I think if you find the reference to it, it explains what it's for in the, in the actual policy.
So, so, yes, A5 is certainly, they want, they did want to see that for all field, class field trips, as well as the log.
Not just clubs?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, because I think these are two brand-new forms.
Correct.
Right.
These were, these were added based on their recommendation. These were actually forms they sent me.
Okay.
After the audit, said, these were their recommended, you know, they're similar to what they sent me.
Okay.
This would be, this will be a little bit of a change.
Page eight explains why the forms were there, and talks about the forms, they came from the recommendation.
Yeah, in some cases, the authorization was there, but they were, they were sort of, there were actually a lot of emails from the teacher to the principal, and they, their recommendation was to kind of formalize that by an actual authorized form.
So will this, this whole approval process, for financial reasons for the field trips and student travel, will that eventually jump into our need, or?
Your need.
To approve international trips?
No, we're not.
This kind of segue into that?
We're approving, not endorsing international trips.
I mean, I'm just thinking, is that coming down the line in policy, or no?
I mean, the approval, I don't, I don't think, the auditors didn't look, the auditors looked at the, how the, how the money is being handled.
Yeah.
Not about approval of what's authorized.
Yeah, what they did.
That's right.
Like, what they did is, they actually selected a bunch of class field trips, as well as student travel, overnight field trips, foreign travel field trips, and they asked for the, where the authorization was, and they, they looked at our school committee policy, that ones that required some endorsement, and I provided that from the school committee notes, et cetera, but then there were one, there were the smaller ones that were the class field trip ones, that they actually wanted to see a principal, you know.
But the foreign, so the foreign one, where it costs like $4,000 or whatever, they, they won't be involved with that, because that money's being paid separately to a private company?
Correct.
Yeah.
But they still wanted to see, in some cases, that there was the form, you know, authorization that the trip was approved, in some fashion.
And I also think, I mean, I think it's also worth noting, I mean, Mr. Connolly did a really good job of creating this in the first place, because there was very little found, a lot of it was like, you don't have this in case there's, you know, ever a deficiency, you know, like a language, to put language in there, but.
Right.
I think there was like.
That's a good example.
One small, like, one field trip, they couldn't find one form that they needed or something, and so, in general, it was a positive report, especially for the first time you have a policy.
Yeah, I think a lot of work over the last five years really has gone into the student activity process, and cleaning things up procedurally, and, you know, there are things that, you know, now that we have the report, and that we'll address over the next year or two, so next time they come out and everything, hopefully, will be that much better.
Any more comments, questions? At this point, I'll entertain a motion for approval of first reading of a revised policy, DK Student Activity Funds.
We'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the Student Activity Funds Fiscal Management DK.
Second?
Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have student discipline, and again, this is, is this a revised policy that's taking a couple other policies and combining them?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman, so I could just give you a little introduction here. What this, what this strives to do, it was, it was brought to my attention recently, that we had some work to do to update our policies on student discipline, particularly around changes that were enacted through, through the legislature, so to conform with law, and I think what we, what I've attempted to do here with the help of council is to combine two policies, one which was on the student behavior, and one which was on disciplining students with special needs, into one, I would say, fairly comprehensive policy on student discipline, with all of the associated procedures for hearings on matters that would warrant such under discipline of students, and what provisions and correspondence principals must observe to conform with what we are required to do. So by labeling this, you know, again, it was just to draw a distinction between new and old, what the revised and original policies were, the JC and JD at the back are the two that I mentioned, student behavior, and then student discipline, with disciplining of students with special needs. The one on top, the new, the proposed new JC brings those two together and also updates them.
Would it be JC slash JD, or just JC? I mean.
It would be, it would be my recommendation that there is no longer a JD.
Okay.
It is just solely JC.
Any questions or comments?
It looks like most of it's taken right from MGL chapter 71.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
I think, I think this was approved by council.
It was, it was written by.
Written by council, so, yes, I mean, we didn't really make any changes to it, because it was what council had approved or suggested.
The only question I had was the right to an audio recording?
Yes.
From hearings?
Mm-hmm.
Is that presently done?
No, we have had, I have had situ, I've had one situation that a parent was going to request that the hearing be recorded.
Okay.
Back when I was a principal.
So the fact that we are now saying we will do that, do we have the devices?
The means to do that, we do.
Okay.
We do.
And staff knows how to use it?
Go to the old fashioned tape recorder.
Okay.
Sometimes the, the appellant will bring the.
That's correct.
Right.
Yep.
Anything else?
Actually, the case I had, that's what it was. They requested it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for approval of first reading revised policy JC, which is student discipline, combination of old policies, JC and JD.
I'll make a, a motion to accept the new revised, or just revised, however you want to say it, student discipline formerly JC and JD to be just JC.
Second.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The chair, do we need to repeal JD?
I don't know, do we?
If it's been combined.
Well JD is sitting.
I think we do. I would, I would recommend we do that.
Yeah, why, why don't we do it just?
I'll entertain a motion to repeal policy JD.
Motion to repeal the student discipline JD as it has been absorbed into JC, the revised.
Second.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's good to have one alert attorney on the board.
That's good, thank you.
I'll get you back Buckley. Calling me old, making fun of me because I've got my chair. Anyway. Okay, next we have.
He's remembered where it was.
Policy GAA, which looks like we're doing the same thing here. GAA, which looks like we're doing the, or policy GA, as we like to call it.
Yes.
As in lady.
Which is, which is combining policy GA and policy GAB.
Yeah.
Gab.
Yes, correct.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes, so again, on the advice of counsel, we received some input. We, we've been asking our attorneys to, to work with us to, you know, kind of the more involved policies like, like these nondiscrimination, harassment, student discipline, to, you know, provide us with updates that have, you know, put us in alignment, I guess, where we need to be. And so both of these policies, both GAA and JCAD to follow them on the regarding harassment, whether it's of employees or students, are on the advice of counsel. So these are really just, you know, strive to update and bring us into alignment where we need to be and also update our reporting procedures.
And so we have, the first one, we have both the policy and the regulations.
Correct.
GAA, GAA and GAA.
So the first one is for employees.
AR.
The second one is for students.
Right, and so the first one combines GAA and GABA.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, any questions on GAA or GAAAR?
The, the only, the only question, the only question that I had was to Mr. Bernard about.
The nondiscrimination statement?
That, that the, that the classes were, were different between the two policies, but what the protected classes were, but they said that was at the, at the request of counsel.
I think the new ones are more updated based on state and federal regulations. Is that correct?
They are, and also what is or is not, since there are, there are some that are applicable to employees that aren't applicable to students and vice versa.
Yeah.
So the nondiscrimination statement, which was recently revised by the committee, will stay as is because it's, it's the most inclusive. But then the applicable classes that are protected for either students or employees come out through the regulations.
I have a question. Can we, what's the word, rescind the GABA in the same motion that we accept?
Make two, make two motions, yeah.
Well, let's ask the only lawyer here.
No, I think, I think it's got to be two motions. We don't want to rescind and accept in the same motion, right?
Everyone thinks they're a lawyer now.
No, I think it should be two.
Repeal, Jerry, I think was the word we raised.
Repeal.
Yeah.
So if there's no further comments or questions, I'll look for a motion to approve a first reading policy GAA, personnel nondiscrimination, discrimination and harassment prohibited, which is combining old policies GAA and GABA. And also, I should say, it's a policy GAA and the regulations GAA dash R for approval.
I'll make a motion, but do I have to repeat everything you just said?
No, you can just, no.
So move. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye. A closed, unanimous.
Thank you. So similarly.
To rescind.
All right, we need a repeal, a motion to repeal GABA.
Is it repeal or rescind?
Repeal.
Repeal, I think is.
All right, I'm making a motion to repeal GABA and GABA.
No, no, just.
BR because it's absorbed into the new revised GAA.
Gaga and Abah here.
But one clarification, is it going to still be, because it still says GAA R on this, are they going to be two sections still? Or is it just going to be under GAA?
No, it's always two sections. Regulations always are separate.
So then we shouldn't, we don't, we're not repealing.
But they were.
GAA R.
No, she said GAA.
B.
GAA BR.
Oh, BR.
Yeah.
The second, okay. If there was a VR, then yeah.
Wait, is there a GABA R?
Yes, there is.
There was a VR.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
Okay, all right, good.
So that's right.
Is there a GAA?
Rescind.
There's no GAA R. It's repealing, you, you would be adopting GAA.
Yeah, we already did.
We did.
So now.
And, and repealing GABA and GABA.
The minutes.
GABA R.
Dash R.
Stu just did this B A B.
They were, yeah.
G A R is not a policy that's attached.
That's correct.
It's regulations.
Regulations.
Okay.
So we have a motion to repeal GABA.
Second.
And GABA dash R.
Correct.
But this GAA R that's attached to.
We approved it.
Do we need to mention it in the motion?
Yeah, we approved GAA, the policy, and GAA dash R, the regulations.
Should we give that to Stu just another time? G A B.
I know, I know that by heart.
I do too.
Yeah, B I B O B, B I B O B O.
Curly's a dope. Curly's a dope. Okay, we have.
Julie, have you been able to what they're talking about?
We have a.
It's a good thing, Julie.
Sorry, Jason. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, unanimous. And next, John, we have J C E.
Okay, so this is now similar to the one you just adopted for first reading. This is similar, but it's applicable for students and the general public, whereas the first one was for employees. That is nondiscrimination, discrimination and harassment prohibited. So this JCAD replaces or is, or would update the existing JCAD.
And this regulations behind it.
And the company regulations, correct. But there's no, there's no need for.
No repeal required.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the students' nondiscrimination, discrimination, harassment prohibited, first reading for policy JCAD and JCAD R.
Second.
Further discussion?
I'd, I'd like Mel to go back and read all of these before.
I used to like to read them, but not, this, we'd be reading until about 11 o'clock tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
A opposed, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Policy Committee. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, John.
Yeah, it's tough work.
It was good though, it was, it was, it was good.
Okay.
When you like what you do, it's fine.
October 2nd, town meeting warrant articles. This is, we have the town meeting coming up, coming up October 2nd. At this time, do we have any?
I, I don't believe we do, Mr. Chairman, but I thought I would put it on the agenda so that I didn't want to presume.
I had to believe we were talking about October town meeting.
I know.
Already.
I know, really.
Yeah. Is there anything we want to ask for?
We need to.
When do we have until? Do we have until August?
Until August 21st.
21st. But that's our next meeting.
Is the 28th.
I suppose if something came up, we could.
You could.
Have an emergency meeting, but I don't, I don't think there's anything.
I didn't anticipate that there was any, but I certainly didn't want to speak for the committee, so.
We don't have to do anything more on the naming of this room? That's all done?
No, in fact, I can talk about that later, I guess, but yeah.
I don't think we have anything.
Listen, I'll just ask for something to get them all ticked off.
Right. Well, they may, we may take a vote or make a recommendation on the ordinance that they talked about tonight.
True. Yeah, that might.
But that won't be our.
We would do that in the pre-meeting?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but they said they were going to come in, yeah, they were going to come and present to us when they, when they have that ordinance.
Or September?
So they have to go now.
Anything else? Okay, so we don't have anything to put on the town meeting warrant at this time. October town meeting. Next, we have minutes. I read through these, they look fine to me. It's the open session for June 19th, 2017. So if I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the open session of June 19th, minutes.
Second.
Further discussion? Alls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A opposed, unanimous. Next, we have the end of year budget report. Michael?
Yes, great, thank you. So the final 2017 budget update and financial report was included in the packet this evening. I'm happy to report that the 2017, you know, closing out fiscal year 2017 went very well. You know, we were able to identify some surplus funds mainly in kind of salary accounts on, on the payroll side and on the expense side, some insurance and utility accounts, as you can see on the report, which all helped to assist with meeting our prepayment objectives, special education prepayment, tuition prepayment objectives that we had forecasted during the fiscal 18 budget development process. I just remind you that we were trying to get to $125,000. We were able to exceed that amount and we actually have prepaid, you know, closer to $250,000, which in this will all assist the district in helping us address some unforeseen costs that, you know, may arise in fiscal year 2018. I'll just remind you, some of that already had kind of come up, some additional costs that, kind of after the budget development, you know, process. So I think that's important that we exceeded that amount and I'm happy to report because we were kind of conservative and things went well towards the end of the year, the last quarter of the year, we were able to, you know, see the amount we had forecasted. The other piece of positive news, the food service program closed out the month of June, although they did have a net loss in the month of June, which is pretty typical, it was less than last year, a little over $5,000, which, you know, that made the, the total net loss for the year a total of $3,139.69. So again, significant strides have been made, as we've talked about in the past, by the food service program. A lot of hard work has gone in by the, the work of Chart Wells and Anna McGovern, the food service director and the food service staff to, to improve the program. And financially, the program is certainly on, on path to be a break even program and we came very close to doing that this year. You know, last year, we, we lost a little over $16,000, so this year, we're a little bit over $3,000. So it's good news that the program continues to be performing well. And as you know, we have removed all food service, you know, subsidies from the general fund in next year's budget, so it will certainly be a need to be break even next year and I'm pretty confident we can do that. On the payroll side, there's really nothing significant to report. You know, as I've been reported in the past, as you can see, as you can see on the final report here, there is some available balances in the substitute account, you know, higher than, than we have had in the past. That's mainly because we just had a, less of a need to appoint long-term substitutes to fill some extended leave of absences, which kind of varies in, you know, each, each year. But, you know, all really remaining, you know, payroll lines, we're very close to, to budgeted amounts. You know, there's a little bit of, of funds in the salary accounts as there, as has been, you know, in the past. So, you know, overall, you know, despite some unanticipated costs that we incurred this year, I, I think due to our conservative spending approach and that we had throughout the year, we were able to achieve our, our carryover funds that we had hoped for during the fiscal 2018 budget process. And I think as we begin to enter the fiscal, or actually as we're in 2018, I think we're in pretty, you know, solid financial standing, but we'll, we'll have to see how everything, hiring season shakes out and so forth, but I think we're in pretty good shape.
Any questions? Next, you have the report, the annual report on, oh, Julie?
So my son came to summer camp here and it's the first time that this basketball camp has been here.
Okay.
And they didn't have lunches. And in previous places, they've had lunches.
Okay.
Is that something that food service would even entertain in doing to, you know, provide lunches? Like how would, do they do that sort of thing?
They could, yeah, they do do that sort of thing. They have done it, they have done it for certain events, major events at the school. I don't, I don't think they've gotten into.
I just don't know if it's financially feasible for them to offer that sort of thing?
I'd like them to be at least asked.
Yeah.
How many kids are there at the camp? Hundred? I think it would be worth their while.
I think it would be.
It's worth asking.
I think it would be worth exploring with them.
It could be more than that, like, I don't, like, my kids went to Summerscape today and they had to pack lunches.
Yeah, I mean, there's some challenges given it's the summer weeks, they tend to shut down and things get kind of put away.
I mean, I just didn't know if they even offered that.
Yeah, I think.
So how many kids bring their lunch with them, so?
I think it'd have to be like a box lunch sort of thing.
They could do, they could do a box lunch, brown bag.
I mean, I'm just thinking, like, as teenagers, they'd rather come and buy some pizza and a salad, and I know.
I think it would be at least worth.
I think it's definitely worth exploring.
And I don't know, perhaps he did contact food services and maybe it wasn't feasible. I don't know.
I would doubt it.
Sure, I don't, yeah.
I don't think so.
It would probably be difficult to do it at all of the schools.
So you send him every day without lunch?
No, I sent him with lunch, but he would have preferred having, you know, something here. And I think parents would have preferred.
Yeah, I think it should be, it can be explored. I didn't like to.
It's really interesting because when, a long time ago, my son went to the camp at Merrimack and all they talked, all they talked about was the lunch.
Yeah.
Not, not the camp.
Not the camp.
Right. The, the Merrimack lunch, but, but that's a lot of kids. I think it's definitely worth contacting them.
I think if, you know, we can reach out in the future and see if.
And I think at least if camps, you know, it would be great if more camps looked to rent the space in. rent the space in, in the coming years, if they at least knew that that was an option.
Yeah, sure.
I think that may attract more people as well.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good question.
I wouldn't say, I would say, ask.
Yeah.
I would, I would encourage them to.
Absolutely.
To look into it.
Okay.
I mean, there are some scheduling logistics and things like that, we have to be considerate enough to make sure that the school gets cleaned, but I think, you know, that camp came in early, you saw the first, first coat of finish on the gym floor was done today. So, I mean, we, you know, things can be adjusted, it's not that we couldn't, we wouldn't be able to rent the entire span, but I think, I think it was, is it, it's worth at least looking at.
And one positive that at least I heard and my son heard was the temperature.
Yeah.
Because they did not have.
No, at Merrimack.
At Merrimack.
Yeah.
The gym cools nicely, it does.
You know, they really enjoyed the space.
Great, nice to hear.
I don't like that for summer camp, I want them to be in summer, I really do, I mean, you know, that's, that's old school.
That's good, that's good to know.
Now, that's the objective, I mean, that we, the catering is what's going to put us over the top, you know.
Right, like, just those couple, you know, weeks of camp could have solved that deficit.
You know, we, I think we've talked to you about the catering, started, we had two athletic banquet here this spring, you know, I'm hoping that catches on a little bit more into next year. But, yeah, I, I, I think, I don't want to speak for you, but I think we're certainly looking to entertain any and all options.
I'd like to see them start catering school committee meetings if they could.
Absolutely.
They did it that one time.
No food in this room, no food.
No food in this room, though, that's right.
You have to have it outside.
Okay, Michael, gifts and donations report, which is eye opening.
Yeah, another, another, again, positive report, and, you know, included in the packet this evening was a memorandum that details the total amount of both in-kind monetary, in-monetary gifts that the school department has received from a variety of our support and parent groups, as well as private donors and so forth, and it's remarkable, three-page list of donations that kind of goes on and on. And incredibly, the total amount for fiscal year 2017 is $420,479.79. So, it's just a significant amount of funds that we received and accepted this year. Again, these, these impressive lists of donation to help fund expenses like athletic team expenses, fitness equipment, transportation expenses for class field trips, technology equipment, expenses to help support drama and musical productions, expenses to help support enrichment activities, and of course, there was, you know, two pretty significant big projects going, occurring, that there was a significant amount of fundraising efforts, and that was the sod and irrigation, and irrigation field project out the middle school and high school athletic fields, which collected a total of $118,650 in donations. And then, of course, the little school playground project, which collected a total of $10281.14, which is, so those two were significant kind of projects that were going on, that's not maybe, wouldn't be going on every year, but if you subtract the two from the, those two large items from the total, we're still at 200, $201,548.65, so well over $200,000.
Every year, there's going to be another big project or two big projects, and hopefully that community continues to be as generous as it possibly can.
Can we go through each one of these and thank them?
No, I, that would, after I read all the policies, we'll do that.
Yeah, the list does include some that are, that are on there for tonight, you know, so it doesn't make the assumption that the ones that are, in a moment, I think, we'll be looking for the final acceptance on that, whereas we see prior to June 30th.
You know, it's interesting, I had more than one person come up to me and ask me about the outfield fence and the high school baseball field, and how did we get the money to pay for that? Where did the money come from?
Right.
It's right here, every single dollar is spelled out right here.
Yep.
And I told them it was all by.
All by donation.
Private donation, but they wanted to know why we would spend whatever we spent to put that fence out.
No, no money from the budget.
I did have one question, there's a donation here, and I don't know, I have it out back there, has that fence been put up yet in the back by the tennis courts?
You know, I don't know. I don't know.
Just wondering.
Yeah, I remember.
I don't believe it has.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, but this is, again, a generosity community, and in light of the fact that we don't have an active education foundation, these, these donations fill the gap. If we did have an education foundation, these donations might be going, a lot of them to that education fund, which, you know, six one, half dozen the other.
Yeah.
Is still supporting the schools, so, but this is, this is great, and as Michael said, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the playground at the little school, we wouldn't have the sod and the irrigation system up here at the fields without these generous donations, so.
And again, like, these are things that, you know, should be funded through the town.
Many of them should be funded.
Places, enrichment programs.
Exactly, right.
I think supplies for teachers.
Well, between this and fees, it's, and it's, this is what's happened, we've gotten away from funding things that should be part of the budget, and now it's just kind of almost an unwritten law that these won't be in the budget anymore. And so now we look for a million, million and a half, $2 million every year in fees and other areas to pay for these things.
Says a lot when you're getting $2 million in fees and donations.
Right.
And you're still lacking in what you're offering.
Fees, donations, and tuition.
That says a lot.
And you count the kindergarten, right?
Yeah, it's a lot.
This is great. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Okay, next, we have John's new staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so in your packet, I have an update on new staff that have been hired, and I would just want to emphasize that with maybe one exception, these are all to fill retirements or resignations, these are not additional staff necessarily. At the batch elder school, I'm happy to welcome Janine Abrams as a special education teacher, Heather Kowko, a first grade classroom teacher, Caroline Beaumier, a general paraprofessional in our kindergarten program, and Sarah Fitzpatrick as a special education paraprofessional. At the hood school, Mara Lacava as an occupational therapist, and Sophia Moremotis, a special education reading specialist. At the little school, Kristen Di Filippo, who will be a half-day kindergarten teacher, and Alessandra Salani, a special education paraprofessional. At the middle school, Rebecca Scobie will be a new psychol, school psychologist. At the high school, Matthew Costello is a health physical education teacher, and Jonathan Hudson will be a special education teacher who is a board certified behavior analyst as well. And at the middle high school, we have two custodians replacing two gentlemen who have resigned, Evan Damato and James Fafard. There will be another report that I'll make to you in August, as we do have some other vacancies that have not yet been filled. So, welcome to all those folks to North Reading.
I recognize at least one North Reading high school grad in there, maybe two.
Sarah Fitzpatrick.
Sorry, what, the Salani?
Alessandra Salani, yeah, right.
So, John, can you tell us which position was a new position in the league?
So, we had the kindergarten position at the batch elder, and, that's it, his new position, is correct.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, everything else is a resignation or a retirement.
While we're on these positions, we were, there was a little bit of concern about, was it the hood school kindergarten enrollment, and if we got a few more students, we might have.
Yeah, it's, did you say the hood school?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this, actually, this morning, Michael and I met with the three elementary school principals to kind of conduct a, kind of a midsummer assessment on where we are with kindergarten. The numbers are very tight, we were up, I think we're up 20.5 students from where we were this year, and we kind of anticipated that, which was the additional position, but the numbers, you know, again, that's in a, that's if you look at it in just a one big picture, but where you start, when you start to break it up among the three schools, and where, with what the populations are at each school, we're, we're very tight at the, at the hood school. But we have, we do have a little bit of flexibility right now, but, you know, I'm, I would say mildly concerned that if we get a, an influx in August that, you know, tips the scale a little bit, we might have to be making some difficult decisions.
Full day and half day?
Combined, right, because that's where the hybrid's going to be.
Right.
Right, so, you know, we have a little bit of flexibility, but it's not a lot.
So, where are the classrooms right now, like, what are the sizes?
Uh, let me think, it is 22, twice?
Yeah, 22.
In 10, is it 10 or 11 in the half day?
It's 10 and a half day.
10 and a half day. So, they're kind of like right on that cusp.
And of the 22.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. In one of the classes.
Everybody's offered full day if they want.
So, it's close.
Correct.
But we do have some families that have opted for the, kind of the open enrollment, I'll say, to go to, they wanted the full day but knew that the spot would not be necessarily in their district school, and have taken advantage of that because they want the full day spot. So, right now, every family, as we've, you know, tried very hard to maintain for the last couple of years, any family that wants the full day has it, it may not necessarily be in their.
That means they have to provide their own transportation.
Correct, right, right.
You're, you're saying somebody in the little or the batch could go to hood.
Correct.
For it.
Or whatever the situation might be. Right now, the vacancies are at, the full day are at the batch.
The batch.
Yeah.
Where we added the third section.
And that's, that's as recent as today, actually.
And those 22 that are in the two hybrid, that's with a para?
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
So, we're, you know, right now, we're holding, you know, and I, you know, it's kind of a hard, it's a moving target, you know, I've kind of asked the principals, I asked them again today, like, historically, what do you see in August? And it's not, you know, it's hard to predict, but I think, you know, we can say, you know, we're kind of all right now hoping that we're able to continue to accommodate as we, as we are right now, but it's, it's, it's close.
22 is a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next, we have.
But I think we're, you know, I think people want the program, you know, and I think they'll, they'll say, you know, okay, and the teachers, you know, the teachers are good, principals conveyed that to us today, that they know the teachers will make, and the para helps, you know, and in some cases, with the hybrid, students leaving midday.
So, essentially, if someone moves into hood, I mean, are they told, you need to go to another school?
If they want full day, yes, that, that's what's happened.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that happening now.
Okay.
And they're doing it.
And half day just make.
And then you have other people that have opted and said, yeah, I'll do it if I have to do it type of thing, so.
Yeah, what if they want a half day?
Yes, their half day then.
A half day, that's problematic, that's problematic.
If they can't force them to move to another.
Right, right, so we're close right now, that's why I said here, there's very little flexibility, but we have options that, you know, we would explore if we, if we need to.
And you said these, these numbers are close to what we'd expected this year, an increase?
I'd say so, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Which was why the, the full day kindergarten addition was, we saw that as being critical. It's 20, 20.5, am I right?
Correct.
From where it was last year to this year. 20.5 students, yeah, overall enrollment in kindergarten.
Anything, anything else on the new staff? John, when's the, when's the luncheon for the new staff?
I'm going to do that in my report, because I, I provided with a sheet.
Okay, all right, next, we have, these are, these are the final donations that came in for last fiscal year.
Correct.
So, we have a lot of them. I don't know who wants to read them.
Yeah, we have a number tonight.
This is Julie's.
You do it in a second.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $50 from Kathleen Pigeon.
Pigeon, yes.
For the LD bachelor scholar, LD bachelor scholarship fund.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of a first act drum set for the Bachelor Elementary Music Department.
One clarification, should we put the value in there, too?
The value is $150.
It's from Douglas and Mary Carey.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $1,225.50 from the Little Elementary School Parents Association to benefit the Drama Club.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses from March 2017 through June 30th, 2017, from the High School Parents Association totaling $1,425.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $3,000 from the North Reading Touchdown Club to purchase a Porta Phone headset for the high school football team.
Second.
For a second, I thought it said porta potty when I first, when I read it at home.
I almost forgot.
I did, I really was. I was like, we're making the football team pay for the porta potties now?
I almost, I would have read it that way.
Yeah.
What were you doing with the word headset?
I don't know, it was really weird. All right, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $7,000 from the North Reading Middle Schools, Middle School Parents Association to be used at the discretion of the principal.
Second.
Christine Wally's not going to like a Uber or anything.
No, this is, this is the middle school.
Middle school, sorry, Kathy.
Kathy. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations, specifically, teacher supply reimbursements, $590, enrichment activities, $7,428, class field trip expenses, $1,600, general school supplies, $530, other school activities, $705, totaling $10,853, from the Bachelor School Parent Organization.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations, specifically, enrichment activities totaling $2,550, class field trips, $3,880, technology and equipment, $4,500, other school activities, $455, totaling from March to June 30th, $11,385, from the Middle School Parents Association.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations, specifically, teacher stipends, $5,531.54, enrichment activities, $2,846.50, technology and equipment, $920.66, other miscellaneous items, $1,350.86, teacher appreciation activities totaling $1,379.69, for a grand total of $12,029.25 from the Hood School Parents Association.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous?
I'd like to make a motion that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations, specifically, teacher supply reimbursements, $1,000, enrichment activities, $8,495, class field trips, $2,550.85, other school activities, $2,933.54, total from March to June 30th, $14,885.34, from the Little School Parents Association.
Second.
I learned to do that.
That's better.
Scott won us.
We start thinking like that.
We'll give that one to Scott.
Oh, no, no.
No.
I clearly beat him.
You just said that, you didn't even know they were a lot of.
We didn't say any of it.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's incredible, I'm always shocked at how much money the parents associations.
Stupid question, but I know generally, but, yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
How do they raise all the money?
How do they raise the money? I mean, I know some different.
Auctions are doing it.
Really? So, they're running a lot of events.
I write checks a lot.
Do you?
Selling things, there's not a lot of, at least the hood doesn't.
I write checks a lot.
Individual sales of, you know.
They don't anymore, they used to do, they used to do the gift wrap, they used to do.
That's amazing.
The nuts, they used to do the flowers, wreaths.
So, they raise a lot from the auctions? They do other events, with trivia night.
A lot of money.
Trivia nights.
Trivia nights, yeah.
It's a tremendous amount of money. All right, so, thank you, community, that wraps up our donations from fiscal 2018, 17, sorry. And now we're onto fiscal 2018, bigger, better, and even more generosity.
Sure, we'll sit if that's possible.
Correct. Okay, next, subcommittee updates, I don't believe there are any, are there, do we have a subcommittee meeting?
There are.
Oh, we did, athletics, well, I was looking forward to the NORCAM report from.
I can't remember what we, I can't remember what we did at the committee, you can't remember if we had them in a meeting.
It was on June 20th.
Yeah.
I think we talked about an NDE, a budget.
We did.
Summary from Michael.
Was it 17,000?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, we're in pretty good shape.
Forgot my notes, we got 17,000 rollover.
We talked about where we were with the new equipment for the fields, we've, we've bought soccer, goals.
They've arrived.
We've gotten.
Gates were in.
Electricity.
We've since gotten an estimate on the dugout.
Oh, we have.
Close.
Less than what it was, or is it still around 13,000?
Yeah, oh, total, I think it was, right around there, right?
It was, it's a little under 5,000 a dugout.
A little under 5,000.
Per dugout.
Per dugout.
Well, we got to think about what we're going to do with that.
We've got some scoreboard quotes.
Got estimates, but no.
No luck with the bank.
No commitment to, as John said, the gates came in at the dugouts.
We have the electrical installed.
Electrical installed for the scoreboard.
In anticipation of it, that's, that's completed.
The dugout enclosures were kind of pricey, the first price we got.
It was almost, it was almost 7,000, but you have.
Yeah, 7,000 each, now that's.
Each, right.
I still think it's something we should seriously look at, not, not, I mean, we'd have to raise funds to cover it, but we may have to raise funds.
Don't we have a meeting with softball coming up?
Oh, yeah, the next meeting, softball is coming to the next.
We can talk to them about some of those.
Yeah, that meeting is August 8th.
Yeah.
I think those are the.
Well, back then, I think you updated us on the.
Oh, yeah, the bathrooms.
We also had the gentleman in from softball.
Right, and we had a representative from youth softball there, talking, and he's going to come back in at next meeting to talk about some projects that we might be able to work on together, including possibly some things at the.
At the little school.
The little, but at the high school also.
Yeah, yeah.
At the new field. You know, we also discussed lights, I know we have, we have some lights, Marty has a couple banks of lights that were, I think Marty was gonna look into, these were lights that we.
These are the old lights from the old practice field, right there?
No, no, these are new lights, when we bought the lights for the turf field, we also were, there was some kind of deal or something where we got an additional two sets of lights, like the ones on the current turf field, no, I don't, Marty was planning on putting them on the old poles, but then we started talking at the last athletic sub-meeting about, could we possibly light the softball field?
But you're gonna need poles for that.
Right, so Marty was supposed to look into potential costs on that, Marty Tilton. I think that was about it, we talked about the numbers, we had good numbers all year in terms of participation. We've got some really big numbers, I know, for soccer and football for the fall, because we've already had team meetings, so I think that's about it. All sports will be getting underway in what, August fifteenth?
Yeah.
When does Julie have to write her four hundred dollar check?
We want cash from you.
See, what else do we have, we had the NORCAM, Scott, anything to report from NORCAM?
Well, I mean, there was a little bit of crying when they realized that Mr. Venezi wasn't coming anymore.
Yeah, I was, I was after Jerry. No, you, yeah. Go ahead, Jerry was.
I mean, the only, the only, I mean, there was just kind of wrapping up the year, there aren't any meetings till September actually for them, but, I mean, the two things, the two things they did talk about were number one, that they're going to try to purchase some new computers so they can do a little bit more, and they're still looking, apparently they've been looking for new locations, and the only concern about that is it's, where it is right now, it's really convenient to the high school and middle school if students wanna get over there.
Yeah.
And so, but they're running out of space there.
Yeah.
So if they move, they may move to a location where it's not gonna be quite as easy for the high school, middle school, it's the only thing I thought was relevant to the school committee.
Move for them is big too, because they got some big switches and equipment that has to be moved when they, when they move, and coordinated all with Comcast and Xfinity, I mean, and Verizon. Yeah, yeah.
Comcast has a building down in Comcast.
Not anymore, I don't, I think they sold it, didn't they?
Well, they were, I think that was one place they actually looked at.
There's a building that's open, there's a building that.
Wouldn't be as much wiring for the Comcast one, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Scott, policy sub, we basically.
Went over.
Your next meeting.
The only other thing was like this week on Thursday, we're meeting to look at the MASC recommendations, and probably gonna, we had to go through, they had like what, ninety-nine policies that they suggested.
We're kinda anticipating this being the first in a series of meetings to do that, right? Yeah.
And then after we get through those, we can do the ones that they've just already kicked out.
Right, right, there were two sec, kinda two, two objectives there, right?
And that was from their mailing of.
Yes.
A few of things.
Right, right.
And I, this isn't a subcommittee report, I just wanted to add that I did attend the final meeting of the suburban coalition, was held in Linfield, and they have decided to disband, and I was one of the votes in favor, the people running, Dorothy Presser, Presser from Linfield, has been running the organization for many years, really doesn't have the time anymore, they've been trying to find other people to come in and take over, and they, they just can't find the people, so we talked a little bit about maybe putting on hiatus, and they said they've been looking for so long, they don't see what another three months is gonna do, what I said was maybe if the thing is dissolved, maybe someone will step up and say, hey, we really need this organization, because it was valuable. They kept our, you know, they worked really with MASC and kept our focus on some of the main issues, including the, you know, the budget resolution committee, Foundation Budget Resolution Committee, so that suburban coalition is no longer, and they had something like eleven thousand dollars left, and they did, the vote was to donate it to, why can't, is it mass budget, it's a mass budget foundation or mass budgets, it's a group that has donated a lot of time to suburban coalition, helping them to understand the budgets and taxes, et cetera, and it's, it's a nonprofit, so they could donate the money to another 501, 3C. So it's too bad, but I know Cliff, we were a member, we were one of the, we're in a lot of school committees that were members, and Dorothy stressed at the meeting to the people who were there that North Reading was one of the more active.
Cliff was pretty involved.
Right.
He really was, yeah.
And as a committee, but as a committee that. But that we were a lot, we were very involved in a lot of the issues, actively involved in a lot of statewide issues, and that many other committees don't make that time to get involved, so, it was, as I say, it's too bad, it was a good group, it's been around since the early eighties.
Wow.
So.
I think that, the combination of that and then when Enru disbanded here in North Reading as well, and there was talk about that, wasn't there a charity that they were trying to get going again, you had mentioned.
The foundation?
Of the foundation, I mean, is there any update on that?
John, have they, any talk about the educational foundation?
Not since the last update I gave you, it's.
Never been able to get it off the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, was one person that was.
Eric, Eric Evans expressed interest, I held a meeting here, John Murphy, you know, they were willing, you know, the paperwork needed to be refiled, but I've heard nothing, no.
It's a lot of time, it's a big effort, and you gotta try to, you know, you gotta put the time in in order to have the events to raise the funds, or it's, it's not a worthwhile effort.
Like, like you mentioned, you know, we're looking at, you know, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of donations, you know, if we had an educational foundation, we wouldn't be getting those contributions.
Right, they'd be going to the foundation.
Going somewhere else.
Right.
Schools would still benefit, but in a different way.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know if people feel more connection perhaps to their own kids' elementary school.
Right, going directly.
And more willing to donate because of that.
They also have the latitude to identify a project that's important to them as a group, you know, for that, like you said, for that school and work toward that.
Right, like the little school.
Exactly, right, right.
And, and I did mention earlier at our goal meeting, John and I just can have an informal sit-down with Brad Jones next week to.
August second?
Yeah, to discuss any poss, not that there's a lot of funds coming from the state and, and you know, the tax revenues are not what they had hoped, they're a little bit lower, but just to sit down and talk with Brad about what potential there is in the future for additional funds for projects.
Yeah.
And can you discuss the bills or the proposed education for the foundation?
Oh, yeah, yes.
The earmarks.
FRBC, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay, John, administrative report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I provided you with a copy, a few things to talk with you about tonight, I've provided for you, you probably saw in the transcript, there was a nice article about the high schools' advanced placement scores, I've attached a copy for you there, I just, I wanna again state my appreciation for the staff who work with our, you know, growing advanced placement program, and also for our students who I think do, you know, a very good job of really stretching themselves, and then, you know, we're, we're well, well into the four hundreds for exams administered, I think when I started as the high school principal in nineteen, excuse me, in two thousand and three, we had eighty-seven exams administered, so we're in the, you know, approaching five times that now, and I think it says a lot about our, our students at the high school who seek to stretch themselves and really, you know, enroll in those most rigorous courses, and our teachers who, teachers in administration who support them to try and to do their best work, so I just, I wanna publicly acknowledge that. I, I provided you with a list of dates for the coming school year, I think they're pretty standard, I do wanna talk about one of them in particular, but the freshman orientation will take place here at the high school on August twenty-second, the, the new educator orientation program, which school committee members are always invited to attend on the first day for lunch, that's around noon time here in the high school cafeteria.
Do they still go on the bus ride?
They do, still do the bus ride, absolutely mandatory, condition of employment. So that'll be August twenty-ninth, the thirtieth lunch will be here, please come if your schedule allows to meet the, the new staff. The middle school, its orientation program, the, the traditional walkabout day for grades six, seven, and eight will be on August thirty-first, on September fifth, the opening day for faculty and staff, so I'm, I change, I'm going to be changing this day up substantially, we're not gonna be starting here with the all-staff meeting in the morning, we're gonna be instead coming here at around eleven fifteen, eleven thirty somewhere, I'll have a definite schedule for you, but we're going to be, I have a keynote speaker coming in, and I just think, I felt like we needed a little bit changed to the opening day, and just trying to do things a little bit differently.
In that white robe.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, you know, the, the staff doesn't know this yet, I actually worked on my letter this morning, it's going to go out, I think I have it right now, it's a date of August fourth, but I think last year was August eleventh, I'm gonna try to get it a little bit earlier, because it is a change, the parameters of the day will be the same, but I think the, the activities of the, of the day will be different, they, they definitely will be different, so.
Like, go to my jobs opening day?
You would be, yeah, so I, I'm thinking that our, again, it's rough right now, but I think the schedule will be such that staff will go to their schools first, do all of their staff meetings, I think teachers really like getting into their classrooms, and I think, you know, this will give them an opportunity to do that first, and then we'll come back here for lunch, everybody will come to the middle high school for lunch, and we'll do the district meetings, which I'm looking to cut back on that actually a little bit to allow for, I think, you know, what, what looks to be a very highly recommended and exciting, I'm excited about the person that I have coming in for.
Is this in lieu of anybody else speaking, or?
Well, you might remember the last few years, we've had the student presentation, the performances, so it would be in lieu of that.
I get you.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought since I became chairman, it was in lieu of me speaking, I was taking it personally.
It's called the Science of Happiness.
Oh, I'm perfect for that.
Science of Happiness.
I'm, I'm Mr. Happy, so I am perfect for that.
So if you could just, you know, I think the committee has a good attendance record.
You can point to mountains, this is where you look like you're unhappy.
Yeah, don't blow it with your speech, Daniel, it is.
So time just TBD on that.
I think it's, it's roughly, you know, lunch is gonna be like an eleven, eleven fifteen, twelve o'clock, eleven thirty, twelve fifteen, at which time we'll then all go into the auditorium, so it's probably gonna be in that noon.
Be here about noon.
Noon to, yeah, and I'll make sure you have the definite exact time, but I think that's, I'm within fifteen minutes right now of telling you, but I think if you're here at noon, that will be plenty of time.
Where I am.
Certainly come for lunch if you want to, but I'll, I'll make sure you have well in advance the exact time, but it will not be eight thirty like it's traditionally been. And then our, our schools will open for students on September sixth, with the grades one through twelve, and the pre-kindergarten and kindergarten orientations to take place on September sixth and seventh, and then, and then the pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students will start on September eighth. Amy Luckowitz mentioned, as part of her presentation earlier this evening about Screenagers, this, this looks really good, this is, this is a movie that we're gonna, the Community Impact Team is sponsoring, so I've set the day, this is under the K-12 Action Team, of which I chair that small subcommittee with Rita Mullin, Amy, it used to be Claudia Brown, but she's now retired, Kathy O'Connell, Peter Majane, Lynn Clemmons, we have a good group, and I think, Scott, you are on it, Amber O'Driscoll is on it, right, I think we have a good, we're an active group, we usually run about three presentations a year, I think, on average, we do the North Reading Night Off, we usually have a guest speaker, we had Ruth Pody last year, so this is good, this, this looks really good, this is a, a film, a documentary about, I'll say kind of the, to raise, raising awareness around screen time of, of young people, and how much time they're spending on phones, computers, devices, whatever, she cites an average of about six and a half hours a day, if you can believe it, six and a half hours a day, so if you haven't seen the trailer, I gave you the flyer, it's, it's, it's worth looking at the trailer, it's very interesting, so, the film came recommended to me, I checked it out a little bit, the, the Community Impact Team is paying for the lease of the, of the film, so we get to show it and the supplementary materials, and it will be free to the community, and I started a signup genius enrollment, I don't know, last week or so, this is October eleventh, by the way, and honestly, within two or three days, it was over, a hundred people have already signed up, so, you know, I'll continue to promote it, but it was an early, early, high level of interest.
Six and a half hours a day, and we need to adjust the school start time by a half an hour.
Right, 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 yeah, imagine six and a half hours, I was.
Bring it down to six hours and we can start.
You are so wrong on the start times, Mr. Anetia.
Little update for you on the capital improvements projects that are undergoing?
Thank you, thank you for breaking up that meeting, yes.
Yeah, exactly, how was that, pretty slick, so the elementary Wi-Fi project, which was funded in part between both the grant that the district received, the work of Michael Connolly, Patrick Daly, and Dan Downs, and a lot of cooperation of our elementary school principals, really, it was, it was a kind of collaborative effort, but that project is complete, and it also received a sizable amount of funding through the capital improvements projects that were funded by the community this year, so that project went very well, and I, you know, I think we have every expectation that it's gonna really enhance our ability to promote the digital learning that we wanna do in elementary schools.
What about the E-Rate funds, do we have to apply for that now?
Yes, yeah.
That's been, that's, that's happened.
Okay.
This mass IT, the state was also responsible for actually applying for that on behalf of us, I've actually reviewed their, their, their claim, and that's been submitted, so we will get, we will see at some point next year, February, March timeframe, about sixty-two thousand dollars will come in through E-Rate.
So how does that work, we, we pay, do we already get the grant money, or we get the grant money later?
We already got the grant money, so the grant money was kinda offsetting the cost of the, the total cost of the project.
Right.
The local match was a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars, so we actually wired those funds to mass IT, the state, and they're actually paying the vendor, the awarded vendor, and then that, those funds, the E-Rate funds once received, will, will come back and flow to, back into the town.
Okay.
It'll help offset the cost, so it's a net impact of like, you know, forty-two thousand dollar project.
Amazing.
Yeah.
How much did the project cost and what were you able to get it done for?
It is. The computer devices for the traditional kind of, well, this year now, the Chromebooks with the one-to-one program that we're implementing, were ordered last week, Michael?
Yeah.
Was it last week they were ordered, so, we expect them, you know, in time for the delivery, and we have the rollout coming in August, we're actually doing a little something different that kinda came about as, as part of the parent orientation meeting, the original meeting back in June, somewhat of a fundraiser, but I think also serve a dual purpose here is we've ordered protective cases, sleeves, and we're working to have the, the North Reading logo, kinda that tradition of the college NR with the corner in the middle of it, you know, we thought that that might be fun for the kids too, to, to have and kinda personalize their device, and, and we're ordering those, we've actually ordered the, the cases, I'm working with a, a local person to, to do the silk screening, and they're gonna be sold as, as a fundraiser, and I, I think, I think virtually everyone's gonna wanna buy one, because I think it just kinda adds to the whole, you know, kinda program, I guess, of the, of the excitement of the.
What was the outcome, what was the outcome of the, of the protection plan?
We're actually going with a, with an insurance, we, we, we got some good, a good lead, actually we got a good lead from Liam O'Connell.
Yeah.
The school committee's attorney, but Dan Downs had already investigated it previously, and it's, it's a very, it's an optional insurance program for, for parents, we're gonna be opening up a portal very soon that they can go in, in fact, I saw an email since we've been in this meeting tonight, from the person that we've been working with, that they'll have the option to purchase the insurance, which is roughly fifteen dollars a year.
Yep.
As a protection, so again, we're gonna be strongly recommending that. Yeah, it's theft, damage.
You know, liquid damage.
This is a company that, this is like a specialty of, if you go on their website, it's like this is, this is something that, this is what they do, right, so, so we think that's a good thing, and we expect that, I think a lot of folks will probably wanna sign on for that, because it's a pretty low cost. And then the last thing is the, the Bachelor School entrance repairs, the PBD Street entrance, Wayne Hardika has been working to obtain quotes along with Michael for the masonry work, the kind of the column work and such, and we expect that those quotes have been received, the money's been encumbered, and we expect that that project will, will start in earnest in August, and I, I think we're anticipating that to be completed by the opening of school, Michael, would you agree, so, that'll be, I think, a, a pretty significant upgrade to that, to that, that front entrance, so-called front entrance on PBD Street of the Bachelor School.
Quick question, Jerry mentioned the baseball fence, will that be coming down soon?
I, I do know that it was, it is temporary.
Right.
It's a, I think for the suburb ball, but I, I don't, I don't have an exact date, I can try to find that out.
I'm just wondering, 'cause soccer will start like the third week of August, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think it'll all be coordinated with, I'm expecting that, and also, it's probably good to note, some of you know this, but not everybody, but there's, I know that some folks weren't thrilled about the screen, you know, the kind of the black screen, you know, I think people, when you're in the, at the game, watching the game, you like it from the inside more than you do from, I think people got used to, and I, I'm one of them, driving by and you kinda saw what was going on, but the screen that's there is actually not the screen that was originally requested or ordered, and the one that, but the company told the baseball coach that, you know, keep that one, we'll, we'll replace it with the one that you ordered, so I think next year, it's a little bit more, I don't know how much, but it was, he told me that it was designed to be more, more see-through.
Just too bad, there were so many people that were, seemed annoyed by it.
Yeah, I heard a little bit about it, not much, but I did hear a little bit about it too.
One other question, and I've gotten this question a couple times in the last two weeks, the tree stumps at the turf field that are off, is there any way we could get rid of those?
I mean, I suppose the answer's yes, but there's a cost associated.